The time is now 6:00 PM. I called meeting to order. Today is the July 31st, and this is the regular meeting of the school board. First, well, I should make one note. Folks will notice that Director Zuzik is joining via, I don't know what this is, Zoom Google meets. And with that, we are required per statute to do roll call votes across the board for everything we vote on this evening. So just a heads up for a little change. All right, Clerk Milner, will you please take attendance?
Director Pine.
Here.
Director Zuzik. Director Zuzik. We're doing attendance.
We can't hear you.
I am present.
Okay, fantastic, it works, thank you.
Director Biermeyer.
Here.
Vice Chair Dresley.
Here.
Chair Tate.
Here.
Director Brunz.
Here.
Director Milner, here.
All right, if I may ask everyone who's able, please stand and remove your headwear for the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, now I am looking for a motion on the, to approve the agenda.
Director Biermeyer. Motions to approve the agenda.
Can I get a second?
Pine, second.
Great, any discussion? Director Dresley.
So I request that we remove Policy 507 from the consent agenda for a brief discussion, so move it to an individual action item.
All right, done. Any other discussion? All right, with that, Clerk Milner, could you please take a roll call vote to approve the agenda with the modification?
Director Brunz.
Affirmative.
Director Biermeyer.
Yes.
Vice Chair Dresley.
Yes.
Chair Tate.
Yes.
Director Pine.
Yes.
Director Zuzik.
Aye.
And Director Milner, yes.
All right, thank you. Next, I'm looking for a motion on the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes from June 26, 2024, and the close meeting from June 26, 2024.
Can I get a second, please?
Biermeyer, seconds.
All right, any discussion? All right, seeing none, Clerk Milner, could you please take a roll call vote?
Director Biermeyer.
Aye.
Director Milner, aye. Chair Tate.
Aye.
Director Brunz.
Aye.
Vice Chair Dresley.
Aye.
Director Zuzik.
Aye.
Director Pine.
Aye.
All right, thank you. And now I'd like to take a moment to recognize the visitors in the room and those who are joining us online. Thank you very much for joining us this evening or watching in the future. We appreciate your engagement in ISD 200. All right, and next on our list, we have the Raider Spotlight.
We'll get back in the routine of having our official Raider Spotlight. However, there should probably be a lot of them, so all of the people who are working feverishly behind the scenes to make sure that we are ready to go and things are looking great for the new year. It's a frenzy behind the scenes, so a shout out and thank you to the work that's happening.
Thank you. All right, and next up, we have public comment. So we have one speaker tonight who will be recognized and allotted three minutes of time. Ms. Ludwig has a 30-second sign to alert you to the time remaining as well as a timer to signal the end of your time. We do ask that all speakers state their name for the record and refrain from using this time to criticize or complain.
It's not about necessarily traditional academic success for a student, but that's about developing core competencies as a young person that will serve you well when you enter the workforce. So I want you to keep those things in mind. I'd like to, again, see a conversation about the budget for '24-'25, what decisions got in there in a public setting, because that didn't happen, and maybe consider adopting a core competency approach to discussions around college and career readiness. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have our reports and discussions, and first up is the superintendent report.
All right, just a couple of things to note. So you have before you, seriously hot off the press, the draft of our back-to-school workshop agenda, and we have a theme this year, and our theme is Rock Stars, and we are excited about that. I was saying earlier today, I had a staff getting a little crazy about titling things after songs, and so we made some adjustments there, but we are super excited about this year's back-to-school event. We're hoping to get this out by the end of the week and really establishing a workshop schedule at a glance. And then the 27th, 28th are our professional development days. That first day is for all staff, so you've all been invited to the Welcome Back kickoff from 8 to 10. And then we have our safety training following that. So one of the things in listening sessions that has been discussed repeatedly is really wanting in-person, in-depth safety training, and we're also moving to love you guys from our Alice training in the past, and so we're excited to bring this in person. And then you can see, we, there's not a minute to spare in this calendar or schedule as we come back, and then we have our Safe Schools mandatory training in there as well. And then Day 2, another number of things included there, too. So this should say "draft" across the top of it, so please put that in there. We'll likely have a couple of additions and changes before it goes out at the end of the week, so we're excited about that. Other things that we have, a cadence. So typically, you review the cadence of accountability, and our team will be doing that next week. We have our All Admin Retreat, and they'll be setting their new goals then, and so you'll see that structure coming back to you. The other thing, just a couple of notes for you, the PFAS that we had been talking about, just really continuing to look at that. Just know that when a recommendation comes to you, it will be a solid recommendation, so they're just wanting a little more time for that. Also, the SOLAR will be coming back to you, as well as the SRO and Crossing Guard plans. All right, with that, any questions?
All right, thank you. So I was just made aware that we have some, we had some technical issues with the livestream and everything, so, but it seems like it's working now, so apologize for any gaps in... And then we got Mark over there. All right. So, next on our agenda tonight, we have all things athletic presentation, so welcome, Mr. Hanson.
Just gonna do a quick tech check. Oh, we're good. Awesome, uh, thank you. Appreciate it. Dr. Champ's willingness to tag this in, and everyone else's willingness to create space for this. So the genesis of this conversation really started with Dr. Champ and I, you know, almost a year ago, when she transitioned and came on board, right? There's an infinite number of things to try to process and wrap your head around in terms of a system of our size. Athletics is one spoke on that wheel that has many, and this has been a common practice over the years with our board, sometimes at a, at a public meeting and sometimes at a board session where it's, the intent is really to be proactive and informational in the approach, right? To enhance your understanding of this very unique sliver of the system. Athletics are really the front porch of a school district. They aren't necessarily the most important thing that our district does, but they are the thing that many families and many kids care the most about, and they really are the most visible and accessible part of the system, right? The, the one that most people can see and touch easily. We have many families that, we struggle to connect with at parent-teacher conferences, but they will not miss, you know, their child's four o'clock ballgame. And so they're the kind of activities, too, that, that generate great pride and engagement, both within our schools, but also across the broader school community, alumni network, local businesses, and otherwise. So behind and underneath all that is publicly consumed in that regard is a lot of philosophical intentionality and a framework that I really want to walk you through tonight, so I appreciate, again, the time to be here. I did bring a couple guests. I'll take the majority of it, I'll invite them up here in just a minute, but this is a brief look at where I want to walk you through, and in the next few minutes, I'll, I'll tag Marissa and Dane in at, at number four, and I'll cover the rest. I think it's imperative to start here, which is why we exist. Co-curricular activities, and in this case, athletics in particular, they're what I would call the heartbeat of a school. They're incredible laboratories for teaching and learning. They are uniquely competitive and communal in their environment. They're engaging, they're emotional, and also very personal, you know? There's lessons and experiences that kids get to be a part of in this environment that just are different than a traditional classroom, right? They supplement and, and engage kids in different ways, but really, at the end of the day, we believe they exist because they develop character skills, you know, the whole student. We leverage the sport to create community and a sense of belonging with kids, to make memories and establish relationships that are going to foster that growth, both within the sport at the time, which is like the picture on the left, and when there are seven, eight, nine, 10 years post-graduation, which is the picture on the right. You know, these activities also directly support the academic mission of the school on a broad scale, right? While proactively impacting all those other elements, the social and emotional mental health of it. It's an unparalleled value, right? You're talking about, on an average, about 1.7 or 1.8% of a district's budget to offer every program that we do. And so it's, uh, in terms of a bang for the buck, I think there's a tremendous opportunity there to, to leverage it. So I also like to initiate some common language, you know, it's really imperative, I think, within this network to make sure that we're all using the same vocabulary, and so I like to describe it as, you know, our programs are, are goal-oriented, but we're purpose-driven, okay? So goals are important. They're typically outcome-based, numeric, they have a beginning and an end, and I'll say it very competitively, right? We plan and prepare to win, so when we head out to the track or the field, that's why we're showing up, and we're going to do the best we can in a team environment to do that, and those are our goals. So oftentimes, our goals are centered around participation or retention targets, performance-based, improvement-based, things like that. They're necessary, they're noble, right? They're direct our activities, and they're an important part of how we approach things. Purpose, however, is really why these programs exist in schools. Purpose is an all-the-time thing that never goes away, and we anchor our collective purpose with this image that you'll see next, and it's simply stated that we provide diverse sports opportunities that develop character and community. And we do that by leveraging the six core values that you see kind of around the wheel of, of the Raider there, things like integrity and sportsmanship, work ethic, having fun. And we're very proud of this, we stand for it, it was collaboratively developed with coaches and kids over the course of a number of years, and you'll see that image a lot of different places throughout game programs and locker rooms and gym floors and things like that. So while we, again, incorporate both, purpose is most important, right? It's, it's most important that we achieve the ends of that end. So as an extension, our definition of success has a couple different components, and you'll see that those are reflected based off of the goals and purpose statements that we have. We're successful when we do any one, but hopefully all three of those things, that we develop lifelong relationships and those Raider skills for all kids, that we do make growth towards the performance goals and objectives that we have, and that, on a small and broad scale, that we contribute positively to the Hastings community. That's the measurements that we use. What's unique about sports in an education-based system is what you see on the screen, right? We like to call this leading from the middle out at the AD and coach level, recognizing that we're part of an aligned system, and what you see there is what differentiates education-based or purpose-based athletics from youth sports, club sports, you know, other sport models. It's not a contest, it's not about what's better or worse, it's just recognizing that this is oftentimes how we are different, and every element on the screen has an important part to play in terms of understanding the synergy between all of them. I bring that up, too, because the education athletic component, you know, in today's era, is increasingly squeezed by those systems that you see on either side, right? The commercialization and the monetization of the youth and club space is pretty intense. We're talking about a $50 billion with a B industry that was $5 million with an M 15 years ago, right? Private training, sports tourism, specialization, all of it. On the other end, college and professional sports have traditionally always been about entertainment at the heaviest levels, but with the evolution of things like name, image, and likeness, and the elimination of conferences and all those type of things, what kids see on their phones and what we kind of consume on our TVs or computers often does not look anything like what you'll see at a high school event on a Tuesday or Thursday night, right? It's very different. And so it's important that I think that we're clear on what the educational athletic space is for, right? How it kind of fits within those other two spots, and that often, what our kids and families experience, you know, from grades, well, ages, I should say, you know, three, four, five, up until they enter our high school system at grades nine or 10, they are wildly different experiences for our families. But we also like to comment that, you know, when they make it to the high school, right? That it really ceases to become about me season, right? When you're eight, or 10, or 14, you're making decisions that are almost exclusively in the best interest of your own child, and yet we are promoting a collective approach, right? Where it's about we season once we get into the school system, which is, is different. But the reality is that, and I've been through every part of it, as a coach and a director and a parent and a fan, you don't see pictures like this at a club sports game. I mean, these are neighbors and friends and classmates from all different grades and all different sports and all different neighborhoods, and we get to experience this, you know, on the ice, in the field, and in the gyms and the mats throughout the whole course of the year, which is fantastic. So with that as a foundation, I want to walk you through very briefly a profile of the athletic programs that we have, and fortunately, you have a copy of this, right? You can come back to it anytime you want, because it's, it's a little heavy on numbers. But we offer, when we talk about offering diverse programs, I'm, I'm very proud of the breadth and depth of the programs that we do offer, 32 different Minnesota State High School League sports. Almost all of them are our own independent Hastings programs. We do have a couple different cooperative sports in Dakota County for our adapted athletes. With our enrollment hovering just over 1,400, that makes us the 59th biggest school in the Minnesota State High School League. So we're in the 11th percentile, there's over 500 member schools. It's what I like to describe, we're, we're a big-small school, or we're a small-big school, however you want to frame it. With the exception of football, the biggest competitive class in every sport has 64 teams in it, so when you go 1 through 64 by size, we're traditionally in the same class as Wayzetta and Minnetonka, as well as the schools that are more closer to us geographically. So it's a pretty unique spot from a competitive standpoint when it comes to size. Just because you have more student athletes doesn't necessarily mean you're going to be competitively better, but larger class means larger opportunities to choose from kids, greater depth, right? More resources, it's just a different dynamic. In a given year, we average over 650 unduplicated students that pick at least one sport, so almost 700 different kids do at least one thing, and just over 400 of them do more than one thing. Some of them are two-sport or three-sport athletes, and that doesn't even account for those that are also in the marching band or jumping into play and other things that we have going on. Interestingly, our female-male split at the high school's been almost 50% on the nose for the last two years. It's incredible how close it is, but with our females at 50% of our student body, 47% of our athletes are females, you can see the male split 50-53, so it puts us within a 3% range, which is right within the healthy range for Title IX compliance, meeting that first prong, which is gender proportionality. Winning percentage, what that represents is on a three-year average, we win just over 56% of our games within the conference when you take every sport that we have, and we're just over 50% when you include all of our games, conference and non-conference, playoffs and regular season. A lot of shorthand in the bottom one, but what that's telling you is, in a typical year, if you just kind of grab an average year, we send three teams to state, we have three conference champions, about eight kids make a commitment to play at some level of college, we have eight all-state athletes, and three header assistant coaches are named Coach of the Year in the league or at the section. So there's your flyby, I'll give you the test here in about five minutes to see what we retained. From a measurement perspective, I think it's critical also to, to describe for you how we measure those things I described earlier. So what you see on the screen is a sports-specific program scorecard, it was internally developed five or six years ago, it's been tweaked and adjusted. Every single one of our head coaches reviews an annual scorecard with me that has the elements that you see on the screen, and I won't dive deep into the data, it's just the intent here is to show you that we've got what's, just like the dashboard in your car, right? You can sit in front of it in five seconds, you can tell pretty quick if your battery's charged, you know how much gas you have, does your oil need to change? It's kind of the same idea here, right? We've got some numerics that are, there's a lot of depth to it, but we've got those core areas of participation targets, and like included in that one is, you know, every sport head coach and I collaborate to develop a target number of participants for the whole program, like what's an ideal or a healthy number? How many ninth-grade participants do we have? Because we want to be able to attract kids to these things when they enter the building. Retention is arguably the most important one in there, because once they start, we want them to stay, and then we also measure our multi-sport rate. Those are the kind of things you see in the upper left. We do survey every athlete in every sport every year, I'll talk about that in more detail in a minute, but that's what you see in the upper right. We do track our cumulative GPA, average team GPA per sport, and then we have a competitive slash performance quadrant in the lower left that measures a whole host of things, the growth factor, win percentage of variety. And so any one sport gets this dashboard, and it really generates healthy, unbiased dialogue between the head coach and myself, right? There are plenty of observations that I'll make, and I've got a trained eye and experience to do that, and the coach is there every single day, you know, more than I'm not. And yet, these are great data points to supplement and complement that ongoing qualitative process that we're all a part of, and what it results in is some awesome numbers like these. So this is the three-year average when you take into account every single sport that we offer. Our three-year average for hitting our participation targets, we're hitting them at a 96% clip, which is very healthy in the sense that most of those numbers are slightly aspirational, right? They're not, you want to kind of shoot for something, so that's a really healthy number. The second one is probably the most impressive number on the sheet, our average retention rate, and this is every sport, male and female, every level, and it measures the actual student athlete, right? So if Jenny played ninth-grade volleyball, did Jenny also play volleyball as a 10th grader? We're not just looking at the numerics, we're pulling apart the actual student name to see if they returned. We benchmark off of 80%. You know, kids have a lot going on between ninth and 12th grade, and, and staying in a sport for four years is not an easy thing to do, so it's unrealistic and unfair to benchmark off of 100%, kind of like it's unrealistic to benchmark off of a 4.0 GPA, in my opinion, but 80%, and we've sustained that for the last three years, it's been kind of a slow uptick, but a, a really, a really healthy number. The next one, also probably equally impressive, if you take the average team GPA of all of our sports is a 3.35, which is massive, and you could argue we've got some great inflation at the high school historically, but it still puts us about a .4 to a .45 deviation above the average GPA of the, the broader student body. Little chicken in the egg there, right? Are your better students choosing sports, or are sports having a positive impact on their academics? But the point is, there's a strong connection there. And then I do want to dive a little deeper into the athlete survey rate. As I hit on, we survey every athlete in every sport within the last two weeks of their season. We've been doing that for seven years, and you can see the trend line, which is almost stunning in the fact that it's gone straight up in those seven years. Since we hit 90%, you know how hard it is to get there and then sustain it, you're also not going to realize a tremendous amount of gain once you're at a rate that that's high, that is that high. There are many things that have attributed to that number, I'll hit on a couple of them in a few future slides, but what I love about this is, I mean, if we're running a business, the student athletes are our clients, and if we're asking our clients what their experience is like, this is what they're telling us. Very specifically, these are some of the kind of statements that they respond to, and it's a scientific Likert scale, they have a spectrum of which they can select a number, and over 90% of all of our kids are responding yes, as a, at least at a three or a four on that Likert scale, which is the highest number to all the things you see on the screen. And so if I'm a parent trying to self-select an activity for my kids to be in, or I'm the director of athletics trying to evaluate the effectiveness of our program, I mean, it's a hard stop for me. You know, when I show this slide with, with our coaches' development sessions, we really almost don't even need to talk about anything else, other than giving them a big round of applause and digging into exactly how we continue to get there, because it's one thing to arrive there, and now it's another thing to sustain it and make sure that all of our student athletes continue to experience it. And so I just want to dig into that a little bit. So how we lead is also really, really important, and we talked about purpose earlier, we lead directly from that purpose. Every one of our coaches at every level has a transformational purpose statement. You see an example of mine on the board. This has been a multi-year partnership project with, started with the roots of the Inside-Out Initiative, a national movement to kind of reclaim the origins of, of education-based sports, but it really tries to get under for our leaders, like, why do you show up? You know, they all have a coaching story, they all have a reason for being there, and yes, they are competitive, but it's usually not rooted in hanging a banner, right? Or actually winning a game. And so you can see the character skills that I've self-selected, like integrity and grit and service. Every one of our coaches has these, it's the kind of thing that they talk about and present at their parent meetings, that their kids know about, and then the challenge between AD and coach is that I can hold them accountable to it and hear the awesome stories that they bring back about how they're living those things out on a, on a day-by-day basis. We like to describe our coaching opportunities as get-to roles, and largely, coaching is becoming, or it always has been, but more than ever, it's a calling and not a job. If you look at the Schedule C rate and, and try to do the math on what the hourly return is, it's embarrassing, so it's not for the money, and it's not for the accolades, of which there are few, but they get the opportunity to impact kids. And this, we'll paint that picture even a little bit more vividly. The average high school coach spends about 30 hours a year in-game coaching. So being a coach is like less than 1% of actually coaching in the game, and then it's 99% everything else, which most new coaches don't quite appreciate until they actually take a step across the, across the line. And so we're proud that for about 120 coaching roles that we have, it's 100 different people. Of course, we have a number of folks that coach more than one sport. What you see in yellow there on the top is the distribution by years of experience in any high school-specific coaching role, meaning about 17% are in their years one, two, or three, right? About a third are in years four through nine, and then about a fourth are in either 10 through 19 or 20 plus, and I think that's a fantastic distribution. I mean, it's not exactly balanced, but again, when you think organizationally, we love the fresh ideas and the fever of our newest and youngest folks, and we need the institutional history and all the reps in practice that our most veteran people have had, and I think the cool part about that is, when someone comes on board, they can see themselves in someone else in the room, right? And so I think that's really healthy as a, as a group, and you can see the composite, basically bio at the bottom, which is pretty wild, right? I mean, 83% multi-sport athletes in high school, almost 2/3rd played at least one college sport, over half are educators by license, and over 40% have been Coach of the Year at least once, which is pretty cool. Last year, we, I surveyed all the coaches, and this was a fun talking point, as we went through some of our PD, but the top three reasons they choose to coach in Hastings are what you see on the screen, that just concept of like giving back, right? They had a positive experience, something they want to kind of pay it forward to the, to the next generation, an awesome sense of community and a, and a really healthy culture that you get to be a part of. What's the greatest strength? Without question, the two most common answers that popped up were a sense of community and leadership provided. And so these are the kind of things that our coaches are challenged to embrace, right? That it's kind of an all-the-time thing to get better at, it's not just about, right, the Xs and Os and the strategy, it's everything else that you see on the screen, the development and mentorship, and what comes with it, too, is there's a ton of planning and organization, but conflict resolution and community relations, right? Staff development for our head coaches in particular, it's a, it's a heavy job. And these are the kind of things that we work hard at in terms of alignment and development, and our coaches experience these things in different ways based on their role, I won't talk about all of them, but, you know, the Minnesota State High School League, right, is our governing body, has ongoing continuing education requirements and certification requirements for our head coaches in particular. We have 24 people that currently hold a head coaching position, at least one, we've got, I think, three coaches that hold more than one, and during the school year, we meet at 6:00 AM every other month and get about 95% attendance. We rotate between community businesses, there aren't a lot that are open that have both coffee and food at 6:00 AM and room for 25, but we make it work, and it's fantastic, right? It's a little bit of logistics, and it's a lot of professional development connections, and, you know, they don't get paid. The ask is that you just show up to get better, and there's fantastic about it. Annually, we bring all of our coaches in for one in-person PD session, but we also continue to look outside the house as well. We've had a variety of expert partners over the years. For example, we, we spent multiple years working with... For example, we spent multiple years working with Minnesota State Mankato and Dr. Cinder Camp off on mental training and sports psychology for athletes and coaches. Our sports medicine partner is Twin Cities Orthopedics, which provides not only just athletic trainers at games, but a whole bunch of supplementary education for our kids and parents. We're bringing Beth and Yvonne Steidenberg's in to work with our coaches in particular about strengths. I know you've all been engaged with that, which are just awesome connections for us to grow. And then fifteen optional book studies since two thousand and sixteen. We typically do one or two a year. We usually get eight to ten people at each one. We split the book in half, meet twice for, again, coffee, six AM. There's a lot of early morning meetings, but great to just watch people grow in their professional practice. And so the last couple of slides here are really about consistent student athlete experiences. So our intent is whether you're playing tennis or football, ninth grader varsity, fall or spring, your team is going to engage in the things that you see on the screen, some level of community service. You have a partner team, they come and cheer you on for one game, you go cheer them on for one game. It's awesome to see our swimmers and divers go out to the cross-country course and try to identify what they're watching. And then watch the cross-country kids go into the pool and try to figure out why kids don't sink. It's really fascinating. Or watch our tennis players go to a volleyball match where you can scream and yell and just they're all over the place. And then the volleyball kids go to the tennis court and there's a different kind of decorum. You have to be quiet when they serve. It's really fascinating, but it's cool for them to see what their friends and classmates are doing. Teaching character is a, is a focus of ours. And then every team has what we call a culminating activity. It's not a traditional banquet. It doesn't involve families, but it's after the last season game and after the locks are turned in, what are the things you're going to do to kind of celebrate the year with your kids and coaches, which is, which is fun. So we just put a premium on these two things, that our coaches coach the person and then they coach the sport, that they coach the process, and then the outcome is a byproduct of that. And so when we stay anchored in that, the experience is usually pretty rich and developmental. So I have got a couple of final slides and like two minutes to wrap up, but I thought it would be even better to invite a couple of coaches in here just to give you a snapshot. I can give you lots of slides and figures and I look at it from ten thousand feet, but they're there every day. So I'm going to duck out of the way. I'm going to invite Marissa Welch and Dana Strain up. Marissa is a multi-sport coach for us. She's our head girls tennis coach and is our assistant boys tennis coach. Dana Strain currently our head football coach, two fantastic leaders. And I've just asked them to just share with you in brief, okay, after listening to all of that, from their perspective, like what is it like to coach here? That's the prompt I've given them and I'm curious to hear what they have to say.
I know, right? Like what's written for us.
Welcome.
Thank you. All right. As Trent said, I am Marissa Welch and I get to coach the girls tennis team as the head coach and assist the boys tennis team in the spring. And it's awesome to coach here and it is just an honor to coach here and as well as be a coach under Trent's leadership. And I feel as a high school multi-sport athlete and then a college athlete, I feel like it's just natural to go into coaching then after. And so I do love coaching, hands down, but I don't think upon like reflecting about like what it's like to coach or specifically here, I would not have grown as much as I have in my coaching without Trent's direction, without the Inside-Out coaching, without the just pointed intentionality. So yeah, it's absolutely awesome. It's like we get to be teammates again on Trent's team or Jackie's team, depending on who's going to be the head coach that day. But like it just, yes, to be on a team with other coaches is just a, really a dream come true for me to be able to collaborate and to work towards common language so that when I see a football player, or when I, my husband coaches too, when, when we talk about athletes like that, we're, we're able to say the same things to different athletes and communicate on the ice or the tennis court or the basketball court or the football field. And I have no right being in some of those venues with my coaching. But, so it's just, it's awesome to have that drive, to have the common language and the common themes. And so I, I'm just, I'm so thankful for Trent's legwork and hard work on pushing us in that. And then to have my purpose each and every day and even just kind of going through the Inside-Out coaching prior to the season, it's just gives direction, but it's just huge on the student athlete experience. And it's, it's not about me, but it certainly is how I can bring it to them. So I appreciate that guidance and I love working through that to make sure that these girls and these boys are getting just a really great on-court and off-court experience and a developing of the whole person.
My name is Dana Strain. I'm the head football coach here and I will start by saying this, coaching is a blessing. I can't imagine anybody else. I say this often, I don't know what other people do to get the joy that I get in my life through coaching. And I've been around to different places and I know that coaching is fun everywhere that you do it. But there are some things that are, that are not common, that are, that are quite uncommon that we do experience here. And one of those is that common vision. It speaks again to Trent's leadership. You saw it earlier, the, the vision statement that we have is not something that is on a website somewhere and, and we're in a manual and lost and nobody sees it. You know, we really live it. And that's because Trent drives it and he promotes it. And you talk about the quarterly breakfast meetings and the collaboration that goes on there, that common vision is critical. It's not common in other places and it provides great clarity as a coach to know exactly what matters and what the purpose is of high school sports and how exactly I as a coach am going to be evaluated. That's critical in making it a very unique experience here. The collaboration that we experience across all coaches, all sports is incredible. And, and it really is like Marissa said, like, like almost being on a team in and of itself with coaches. I routinely have Marissa, you know, we've worked a lot through the years, but I know that I can talk to Marissa, who does not coach on my specific sports staff, but I could talk to her at any time and say, hey, I know you've worked with this student before. I know you've got this student in class. And it isn't just Marissa, but all of our coaches. We really do have great buy-in. We really do have great people and we've got great collaboration. And the last thing I would say is community. This is a great place to coach. It really is. It's unique. Our, our fans and our community support us. They are passionate about their kids. They are passionate about their sports. That's how we want it. I've heard all the stories about parents through the years and how crazy that they can be. And I can tell you that here, we've really got it very, very good. And it is a great community to coach in and it is a great place to coach in, in Hastings High School. That's all I got.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great presentation and a lot of fantastic information. Thank you very much.
Two quick ones and I'll get out of your way. I think it's two. I told those guys I was going to buy them a burger and then they started saying a whole bunch of nice stuff. I wonder how hungry they really are. Might be a, a big bill when we get out of here. Last couple of things I'll share, we're also super intentional about front-loading education for, primarily for our families and parents, right? Because this is an experience that's fraught with all the things we've already described, emotions, finances, a variety of things. So I won't, I'm not going to give samples of these. You can, I can, you know, we can link to these a lot of different ways, but we have a static parent handbook. We ask folks to read it. We ask them to sign that they've read it, whether they actually read it or not. I can't legislate their integrity, but it's there for them, right? It's full of contact information, data, resources, try to help them be the best sports parent they can. We have an annual sports parent video that is shown at every preseason sports parent meeting that again, tries to exemplify everything that you've kind of heard tonight. Also, a few years ago, started offering a, a fall town hall. We've got this coming in two weeks. It's targeted really at parents of incoming ninth graders that haven't played a sport in high school before, right? It's their kind of first time going through this whole thing and what is it like? And then any families that are new to Hastings. And so some years I have eight parents show up and some years fifty, but if one shows it's important to them, I guess it's a good way to kind of supplement everything else they get on a screen. Of course, I have a variety of, you know, screen-based tools, website, you know, social media that will broadcast things. At least three, sometimes four times a year, we'll do a seasonal newsletter. If you've been copying those throughout the year, some visuals, some season stats to kind of celebrate what's happening. We have an ongoing multi-year refresh of our recognition walls at the high school, which is really fun to watch come together. We recognize, you know, individual all-state, college all-Americans, state championship individuals and teams. We have a wall of honor for all the in-between people that take stats and tickets and work at the table and coach. And then the last piece I'm working on right now is archiving our section and conference championship teams throughout the course of school history, which has left me kind of blurry-eyed. I'm up to two-hundred-and-ninety and I think I'm almost done, which is incredible. So it's kind, it's fun to watch those things come together. And then the last two years, we also took on a new extended initiative. We've, in May, we've, we've launched the, an in-person Raider Sports Awards. It's packed high school auditorium to just recognize all the awesome stuff that, that happened. So different ways that people can engage and be a part of what we, we have going on. So kind of timely topics, things to maybe kind of leave you with that, that continue to pop and can present themselves. Enrollment and classification is an ongoing discussion, not only across the league, but of course, within our independent conference. As I described, when you're fifty-ninth out of sixty-four, you're in a unique bubble. You're kind of just above in one class and almost in the other. And that has a huge impact on, you know, who you might play and who you're matched up against and some of those type of things. So I would, I've also described that the size of our system is just about perfect. I mean, we can offer basically everything. Kids have a chance to be a part of multiple things and we can field multiple teams. You get, you know, three, four hundred kids smaller, it's pretty tough to offer as many programs as we do. You have to make some tough choices, right? You get six, seven, eight hundred kids in one grade, yikes, I don't even know if I can be on the team, you know? So I think we're in a really sweet spot. It's not perfect, right? But we've got our opportunities. So programs offered, as I said, were very flush, but things do evolve, you know? You know, we've got some programs that have about thirty to forty percent of what they traditionally had twenty-five and thirty years ago because times are different, right? And so that sport was popular when their parents were kids and it's not so popular for them anymore. New programs continue to emerge, right? Boys volleyball is the newest emerging sport within the State High School League. It'll be the first kind of emerging year this spring for some schools to see how that goes. It's just something we're always watching and taking the temperature of our kids and our community. The third one I've hit on a little bit already, but that commercialization of sport is a huge one. The amount of finances and emotion that come into the sport experience, particularly when kids are younger and before they reach the high school, really can have an impact on their mindset coming in. And then personnel turnover. Nationally, it's twenty-five percent of high school coaches and A.D.s turnover every single year, which is nuts. Here, we're at about twelve or thirteen percent. I've tracked it, so we're about half, which I think is a testament to the staying power of what we have going on. At the same token, seventeen of our twenty-four head coaches are different than when I started in this role eight years ago. You know, that's about seventy-five percent. The vast majority retirements, you know, and resignations because of a move or a family choice, right? And a few have stepped because their role is, it's not easy, right? The pressure and the intensity is very real and that's a challenge to keep in mind. But when you think about that twenty-five percent number, again, if we're running an organization and every four years, a hundred percent of the people are new or, you know, your longest-tenured person has been there four years, that's tough, right? So we're, we are not in that spot in Hastings. I hope we don't ever quite get to that, but we're there. And then finances, where can you go and not have finances be a pressure point, right? In your backyard, in your business, in our school, same thing. Athletics are no different. I appreciate the regular communication that I get to have with our finance office, with, with Jen, Dr. Champ, all the, all the folks that are a part of that. The reality is our finances are up fifteen to twenty percent from what they were five years ago in every aspect, right? Whether it's what it costs to pay for the official, what it costs to buy a new uniform, what it costs to buy a soccer net. I mean, it's all incredible. We're doing the best we can to continue to provide a consistent experience, be fiscally responsible, and yet, you know, there's some things you just can't give on if you want kids to actually be able to play the sport, right? So we continue to work to be creative with that. And facilities are the kind of thing that we remain really proud of. I talked about that accessibility piece and you look at what happens with the tennis court, the Todd Field, the scoreboards at baseball and softball, the gym floor, the bleachers. My experience here in almost twenty-five years is that we are pretty wise about how we maintain, right? We're never like too quick, but we're rarely too far behind, you know? I think there is kind of a sweet spot there where you want to kind of stay refreshed and we want our kids and families to be proud of the places that they play. And we get the benefit most of the time at the high school too, when people come in and either haven't been for a while or have never been there, everyone assumes the school is less than ten years old. Nobody thinks that Todd Field's been there for ninety years. It's amazing. So it's pretty cool how we're able to do it. So thank you for the opportunity to kind of walk you through very quickly a profile of kind of where we're at and I appreciate it. Questions if you got them, otherwise I'll get out of the way.
Yeah. I'll just speak to the culture that you've created among your coaching staff and even with the student athletes. It does permeate and grow the adults in that culture. I've had the pleasure of working with colleagues that have come from that coaching culture and what I see in how it impacts their teaching and how they think about education as a system, that we, we center the student around their need and then we, we go for progress and we're always cognizant of that. And then they're also open and vulnerable about improving their craft because it really is like I control me to influence that.
Right on.
And I have enjoyed seeing that ripple through different educational systems, both in colleagues and leaders. And I think it's a great way to guide even our work at the table here, like student first and then how do we help them make progress together.
Yeah, right on. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. All right. Next on our agenda, we have a performance review summary. So in, at our last meeting, we had a closed session to speak through the performance review of Superintendent Champa and the outcome you can see in the attachment in Board Book. I won't read through all of her goals and everything, but the, the goals are there along with the compiled score from the board as a whole. Overall, Dr. Champa got a three-point-nine out of four. Four is exceeded expectations. And I'll just read the overall summary here. The board is amazed at all of the positive changes Dr. Champa has made in her short time in our district. She's a fantastic leader and change agent. Specific words and phrases used by board members to describe her include: rock star, transparent, honest, ethical, holds others accountable to high expectations, clearly communicates, problem solver, approachable, meticulous attention to details, high level of professionalism and support for staff, school pride, ferocious, calmness that keeps things controlled, always learning and seeking solutions, wants all to be involved, great self-awareness, and transformational leader. So we appreciate everything that you do for us and look forward to next year here.
Thank you.
Let's move on. I, thank you. I appreciate it and we'll strive to. Thank you. I appreciate it and we'll strive to make 24, 25 the best it can be.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right. And next up, we have a building construction fund project update from Ms. Seward.
Thank you. So the building construction fund accounts for the money the district received from the voter-approved bonds and the money can be used for school renovations and improvements. So the update since last month, the current unallocated balance is about 171,000. We do know we owe some money in arbitrage, so we're kind of leaving this unallocated there to account for that. The current remaining balance is 2,669,000. As far as updates from the last month, there's not a lot within the categories, but just know that those projects that are in process, there is a lot of work happening right now. So we'll start seeing some of those projects close out in the next few months. And I can take any questions if there are any.
All right. Thank you. Next up, we have a data request update from Ms. Moon.
Good evening. This month, the, the legal bills that have come in, there were no expenses related to data requests as far as legal costs. We do currently, since July 1, we have seven data requests that are pending. Six of those data requests have come in the last week. We have one, the work, we've been, we're doing some work to begin on one in particular. And at this point, we're anticipating that the one data request that came in is going to probably be 100,000 pages or more by the time we get done. So, and that's one of the ones that have come in. So we're working fast and furious on data requests right now.
Okay. So I have a question. 100,000 pages of documentation, does that all need to go through legal for redaction before it's, so legal has to review 100,000 pages for one data request?
Correct.
Do we have any idea what kind of a cost that is going to be to the district and the taxpayers?
I do not.
Do we have any historical data of it was a lesser volume of pages to review, what they've cost historically?
I can probably pull, so the, the difficulty is, is that you start and you gather all the data and get it to them. They then go through, review all the data, deduplicate requests and go through the data to make sure all the data is responsive. And then they take that information and they start reviewing and redacting. So you can start out with a large number and it can come out as a much smaller number. In this case, the reason I believe it's going to be the number that we're looking at is because just in the emails we've pulled alone, there's 115,000 emails that are going to be reviewed to see if they're responsive. And that's emails, not the attachments and the pages of the emails. That's just a number of emails. And again, keep in mind, we pull that, what we believe is responsive, and then it gets whittled down to what is actually responsive and reviewed. But, so it just depends on how, I mean, there's really not a set time for every 10 pages. It's half an hour or anything.
So should we start tracking the district staff hours in addition to legal expenses associated with these? One question. Second question. Historically, when data requests come in, all the data is gathered, legal reviews it, we pay the bills. What is the outcome? Are they picking up this information?
Depends on the request. Some people have chosen to do inspection and so if we have a document that, or information that comes back from legal, let's say we've had some that are three, 4,000 pages, we set them up on a computer and they can go through and look at all the documents and tell us which ones they want, and then they pay for each copy that they take. If they don't take any copies, they just look at the data. There's no, there's no cost to recoup. The costs are, we eat the costs. If they take copies, it's 25 cents per page for 100 or less. And then we do actually track the amount of time and the cost of the lowest level person that can do the work. And then for, if it's over 100 pages that are requested, it's a calculation of how many hours and the cost, it costs to do it, how many pages are in there. You divide the total cost of the paper and the labor by the number of documents and the request to get the per-page count.
Any other questions? I guess, to my knowledge, on this, on, on the one data request that I'm aware of, no one has reached out and asked questions about what they're looking for or what they're looking to get. The public absolutely has a right to all of this information, but now hearing the astronomical expense that this is going to be, I would urge the public to reach out to the board with their questions first before taking this route. If there's anything that we can get clarified before, before going this route, because that's concerning to me as a fiduciary for this district and to taxpayers. Thank you for the information. All right. Next up, we have, I'm sorry, what's going on? Next up, we have our school board representatives and committees to report out. And the first one, we have Director Zuzik with the ISD 917 report.
Do things like find housing and, you know, help them to get furniture and all kinds of different things. The work that Dr. Faber and his team are doing at 917 is, is incredible and it's being modeled throughout the state or replicated throughout the state.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Zuzik? Absolutely.
Director Zuzik, we had the pleasure of being at the same 917 retreat under different capacities and different hats, and I thought it was unique to note that with the culture that they've developed, they are likely going to be fully staffed when the school year starts September 3rd. And I find that incredible in the world of education. So I get a hat tip to them for what they've cultivated in that, in that space.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Moving on. Thank you. Next up, we have an AMSD update from Director Brunz.
Yeah. The focus this month has just been keeping members of boards up to date on new laws that are in effect this month. So we talked about that at length last month in our regular board session, but I also want to just keep you abreast of the financial situation of the state. Net receipts are up 0.4% over the fiscal year, so the state is making more money some months higher than others with like a growth rate of like 2% over specific months. But when we go to advocate on our, our own behalf in January through May of 2025, it's reasonable to make requests, to, to fund mandates and make other requests, cover the cross subsidy. Those things would be reasonable asks if the books trend in the way that they are. For folks at this table, November 14th, AMSD and Bright Works are hosting their conference. So I would look into that and register to high-quality organizations. That's high-quality PD. And for anyone in education, get your BOSAs. That's where they are.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Director Brunz? All right. Next up, we have the Community Collaboration Committee update with Director Pine.
We have not met since our last event and since school's coming back in session, we're going to put on the next work session for us to establish the times and dates for the rest of the year.
Thank you. Next up is the Facilities Committee, Director Milner.
We also have not met, but we have a meeting coming up August 9th at 8 o'clock in the morning in Conference Room A.
All right. Thank you. Next is the Finance Committee update, Director Zuzik.
We have not, we have not had a meeting since our, our most recent one, and the next one is, is on the books and coming up.
All right. Thank you. Next up, we have the NAPAC Committee update from Director Brunz.
Yeah. My family was out of town, so the, the pleasure of attending this meeting fell on Vice Chair Dressley. So I want to thank you for attending and filling out this note sheet for me, but I will relay that messaging along, that Native American liaison position was offered to the top candidate, was it? That's a W. So there's a meeting tomorrow at 6:00 at Pleasant Hill Library, so we'll be talking about that, I'm sure. They'll also be electing their vice chair at that meeting. They've, they were hoping to get an informational booth for the event on Friday. Were they able to secure one? Maybe no one at this table can speak to that. Ah, okay. 28th. Awesome. Yep. And then there's some talk about Indigenous Peoples' Day, October 14th, and how they want to lay out programming for that day, programming in the classroom, positively tribal flags at each school for permanent display, land acknowledgements, and then NAPAC hosting another family fall event. But again, the meeting is tomorrow. I'd encourage you to attend. It's a great community to be a part of.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Next up, we have our Student School Board Committee update from Vice Chair Dressley.
We just met before this meeting, so you can expect to see a summary at the next meeting in August.
Sounds good. All right. Thank you. And then finally, we have our lengthy Policy Committee update.
It's not lengthy. They're only legislative revisions. So the committee reviewed 32 policies with legislative revisions on July 1st. Of these 25 of the policies are listed under legislative revisions and they are only included for transparency purposes. These revisions quote directly from the Minnesota, from Minnesota law and involve clerical updates that do not affect the substance of the policy. The school board may adopt these revisions in a single meeting pursuant to ISD 200's Policy 208. If any board member wishes to discuss or address a specific policy, they can remove it from the consent agenda. The remaining seven policies were already under review as part of our three-year policy review cycle and will continue through their standard three-reading process. I will detail one policy for first reading, once I'm done reading the next summary. I do want to mention Policy 504, Internet Technology and Cell Phone Acceptable Use and Safety Policy is not on the agenda tonight because the committee did not get a chance to get to that policy in our last policy committee meeting. It will be a topic of discussion on a week from today during our working session and the following day at our Policy Committee meeting. We met again on July 29th. In collaboration with building principals and district administrators, the committee discussed the 2024 legislative revisions. Policy 506, Student Discipline Updates will be detailed following the summary and Policies 613, Graduation Standards. There are no additional updates, just the revisions that were made due to the legislative session. The committee had a lengthy conversation with administrators regarding policy, the 606 set of policies, which are textbook and instructional materials. These conversations will continue and the board can expect to see these back in the coming months. Our next meeting is August 8th at 11:00 a.m. Okay. So for first reading tonight, we have Policy 615, Basic Standard Testing Accommodations Modifications and Exemptions for IEP Section 504 accommodations and LEP students. The committee had discussed this policy. There were a lot of changes based on the fact that it hadn't had a full review since 2006. So Section 2 added A and B, Section 2 added or replaced C, Section 3 replaced language and Section 4 replaced language. Of course, there were legal and cross-references, reference updates as well. And that's all we have for first readings. Anybody have any questions?
Vice Chair Dressley. As I read through it and with the special education lens, the, the MTEST, the Minnesota Test of Academic Skills, as, as an A, is, is, it feels, just in the flow of how the policy is presented, it's getting like that LEED-DAR treatment, and I wonder if it would be better to begin with the MCA and, and that process for accommodations and, and then, and then move into MTEST with its specific eligibility and appropriateness measures as, as a member of the IEP team and move that down. So I was thinking, as I read through, that A would become outlining the comprehensive assessment and those processes, and then move into the MTEST and then eligibility for that as well.
Would you mind sending me that, sending that to me in email form?
Absolutely.
Perfect, because we'll bring it back to committee next week then when we talk about it again. Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. So then we'll move on to second reading, changes that we had. So Policy 506, Student Discipline. The committee discussed Section 11G. It is now updated to include the language from Section, or Section 11M, and then 11M was removed. The committee is recommending fast-tracking this policy for adoption tonight because of the student handbook, even though it's a first reading. Second reading, sorry. And then also Policy 504, which is on our agenda for second reading, is Student Dress and Appearance, and that is also being recommended to be fast-tracked, and there are no additional revisions or changes to that. Do you want me to go through all the ones?
So we're looking for a motion to move those two items to an action item?
Correct.
Tonight?
Yes.
Okay. So we're looking for a motion.
I move to...
Zuzik, go ahead.
I move to put Policy 504 and 506 as an action item for this evening's meeting.
Can I get a second, please?
Zuzik with second.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? All right. Oh, go ahead.
Chair Tate. As I read through it, there's, there's a mention of the use of Saturday School as a form of discipline, and I wasn't sure if buildings still use that model. And then having run programs like that, using school, the place we want folks to go to as a manner of discipline, always felt like cognitive dissonance in my brain, like that, that was always a hard sell. If folks are using it or aren't using it, it's probably relevant to the conversation because if they're not using it, then we can just strike that out of the list and that's just not a thing that we do anymore as a form of discipline.
I would say it depends.
Okay.
I know that for some, it's been very effective for students and for staff, but it depends on availability and all sorts of things, but it, it has worked in a positive way.
And I will just make the statement that, that Policy 506 is mostly driven by MSBA model policy, except for the revisions that I talked about adding G and M together. And then also, we shifted a lot of, or a lot of language that was encouraged to, to will, or we either will or we will not, instead of encouraged to as the language in the policy.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. With that, we need to do a roll call vote. On the motion at hand is to move Policies 504 and 506 into individual action items this evening.
Vice Chair Dressley.
Aye.
Chair Tate.
Aye.
Director Brunz.
Aye.
Director Zuzik.
Aye.
Director Pine.
Aye.
Director Beer Meyer.
Aye.
Director Milner, aye.
All right. Thank you. So those should be the first items that we address as individual items and back to second readings.
The remaining policies for second readings, there were no changes to other than legislative revisions. We have Policy 509, Enrollment of Non-Resident Students. Policy 511, Student Fundraising. Policy 513, Student Promotion, Retention and Program Design. Policy 518, DNR and DNI Orders. Policy 519, Interviewing of Students by Outsite Agencies. 521, Student Disability, Non-Discrimination. 722, Public Data Requests. And 806, Crisis Management Policy. Any questions on the second readings for tonight?
Thank you. And then we'll come back to the third readings and the, after we go through, it looks like we've got an item on the, on the consent agenda, sorry. Consent agenda is next. And if you want to speak to specifics on the policies within that, that'd be great. Yeah. So all the, so next item, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. So if you'd like to make a comment about anything in there.
So we did pull 507 out of the consent agenda for individual action. The reason that that was pulled out is because I would like to offer an amendment to the policy before we approve it. The reason for that is we got some feedback from the police, from the Hastings Police Department, and so I want to acknowledge that and remove Section 4C or otherwise an agent of the school district before we adopt that tonight. But since it is in third reading and this was a legislative revision, I didn't think it was, we just didn't have time to get to it in our policy committee meeting, so we're talking about it as a committee of the whole.
Okay. Thank you. So that'll be, okay, so that will be, so we have 504 and 506 now in the consent agenda, correct? And 507 will be moved to the first individual action item. Okay. We're set. Anything else? Policy-related?
No. We are all set to go.
All right. I just would like to take a second to thank Vice Chair Dressley. She has put in an amazing amount of work and time in getting all the legislative updates into these policies. How many policies were updated with legislative updates? 33 policies that she had to go through and make all these changes. So thank you so much for your time. Very much appreciated. Marcus thumbs up, clapping, the whole deal. Sorry. Director Zuzik. All right. So next on our agenda then, we are, I'm looking for a motion on the consent agenda, please.
Don't we have to do the first action item?
Nope. We're good. Consent is first, yeah.
I motion to approve the consent agenda.
Beer Meyer seconds.
All right. Any discussion? One second. Let me scroll real quick. It's a lot of policies. Just want to make sure I'm not missing anything. So, hold on one second. Where does the consent agenda end? Holy cow. Okay. So I would like to, do you want to, actually, can you make a comment about Policy 429, please? So I would like to, do you want to actually, can you make a comment about policy four twenty-nine, please? That is in the consent agenda. That's the one to recommend for sunsetting.
Absolutely. So policy four twenty-nine is conflict of interest. We had originally sunset that policy, but then we thought we needed it for auditing. So we brought it back with the intention, we talked about it at the board, that as soon as we found it in other policies that we would sunset it again. The language that we needed to make sure was covered is available in policies. Seven oh four, I think. Seven, I'm going to have to look, it's in the seven hundred series.
I don't, but we did get the guidance on that to ensure that it was covered.
So the intention is to sunset it again without having two meetings to do so. Since it was the intention to sunset it as soon as we found that other information in another policy where it covered it. Any questions?
All right, thank you for that. All right, with that, any further discussion on the consent agenda? All right, with that, Director or Clerk Milner, could you please take a roll call vote?
Director Pine.
Aye.
Vice Chair Dressley.
Aye.
Chair Tate.
Aye.
Director Zuzik.
Aye.
Director Brunz.
Aye.
Director Milner, aye, and Director Beer Meyer.
Aye.
All right, thank you. And then, sorry, I got to refresh and it's going to get all messed up.
Seven twenty-one is the policy.
Thank you. All right, so the first item up for individual action is now policy five oh seven. So, oh, go ahead.
Just to comment about five oh seven, I know you're about to vote on that one. Since it wasn't, we weren't able to get to it in the policy committee. I would recommend that you wait on this policy just because the recommendation, there's been so much contention on this policy. I want to make sure that we get it right and there's not additional changes coming forward. So I would appreciate that one waiting.
So then I motion to move policy five oh seven back to committee.
Beer Meyer seconds.
All right, any discussion? All right, seeing none, roll call vote to move this move policy five oh seven back to committee, please.
Director Zuzik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Dressley.
Aye.
Chair Tate.
Aye.
Director Brunz.
Aye.
Director Beer Meyer.
Aye.
Director Pine.
Aye.
Director Milner, aye.
All right, thank you. Next on our agenda is voting on the personnel report. I'm looking for a motion on this item. Looking for a motion on the personnel report.
I motion to approve the personnel report.
Second, Dressley.
All right, any discussion? All right, seeing none, please take a roll call vote.
Chair Tate.
Aye.
Director Brunz.
Aye.
Director Zuzik.
Aye.
Director Pine.
Aye.
Director Beer Meyer.
Aye.
Director Milner, aye, and Vice Chair Dressley.
Aye.
All right, thank you. And next up, we have a donation acceptance resolution. So. Clerk Milner, could you please read the resolution?
I clerk Milner, Milner, introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Whereas school board policy seven oh six establishes guidelines for the acceptance of gifts and donations to the district. Whereas Minnesota statutes, section four six five point oh three states that the school board may accept a gift, grant or device of real or personal property in accordance with the terms prescribed by the donor only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two thirds of its members. And whereas the referenced donations in the district two hundred donations report from January twenty twenty-four to March twenty twenty-four have been generously donated. So we need the motion.
You, well, you made the motion, so we need a second.
Second, Dressley.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? All right, I just want to say that this is absolutely tremendous. Donations total just under two hundred fourteen thousand dollars in this quarter. That is astronomical and thank you to our community for your support of Hastings Public Schools. All right, now we can do a roll call vote.
Vice Chair Dressley.
Aye.
Director Zuzik.
Aye.
Director Milner, aye. Director Beer Meyer.
Aye.
Director Brunz.
Aye.
Chair Tate.
Aye.
Director Pine.
Aye.
I have to say, I feel like you're trying to keep us all awake tonight with being a different order every time. Just waiting with the trigger.
Well, so I have one more sentence to read now. So therefore be it resolved by the Hastings Public School District School Board to gratefully accept these gifts.
Yes, thank you. All right. Moving on, we have a district vision card adjustment. Superintendent Chappa.
Sure, so if you take a look at our district vision card, this has been before you earlier. So one change that I wanted to point out to you, of course, as soon as we get this done, we are notified by the state of Minnesota that at the very bottom, our operational efficiency, we had a clause there with school finance award based on MDE criteria. MDE is no longer offering that starting this year. So however, what we are adjusting it to, and this was in collaboration with Director Subert, is that we will still annually meet those established criteria. So just want you to be aware that we will not get that award from the state, but we'll use that same criteria. Any questions?
All right, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion on this item.
I move to approve the revised district vision card for twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Pine, second. All right, any discussion? All right, with that, please take a roll call vote to approve the modified district vision card for twenty twenty-four.
Director Zuzik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Dressley.
Aye.
Director Brunz.
Aye.
Director Milner, aye. Director Pine.
Aye.
Chair Tate.
Aye.
Director Beer Meyer.
Aye.
All right, thank you. And next, we need to appoint a representative, a school board representative to the relicenser board. This is actually something that we did in the organizational meeting. And after that meeting, it was realized that there is paperwork actually that is submitted to the state every September that requires that we name the the folks on that committee. So we are doing this a little bit early, but with the intent that this person would be appointed starting September first. So currently, we have Director Zuzik is on this committee. And if you wouldn't mind, sorry to put you on the spot, would you just say a few words about what is entailed in being a member of this committee, please?
Affirming on behalf of the district that each person that renews their license has met all of the criteria. There is a group of people, they are teachers throughout the district, representing different levels, different buildings and different programs that meet after school one day a month. This past year, the meetings were at the high school. They are very efficient, they're very good at what they do. I would say that it's typical that once per meeting, they'll bring something forward and say, let's talk about this one topic. Because there might be a theme or a trend line to the way that something is being managed or something is, you know, being questioned or or how can we speed up the process to make it quicker for our staff to get the feedback that their licensure renewal credits have been approved? It's not a heavy lift, it's it is a heavy time commitment, once a month for about an hour and a half.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, I need to ask if any board members or which, I will say which board members are interested in being on this committee?
I will step up, yes.
Yes? All right, is anyone else interested in being on this committee? All right, thank you, Director Beer Meyer.
Thank you.
With that, I am looking for a motion on that then.
Zuzik recommends Director Beer Meyer for the relicenser committee.
Pine, second.
All right, any discussion? All right, with that, a roll call vote, please.
Director Pine.
Aye.
Director Zuzik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Dressley.
Aye.
Chair Tate.
Aye.
Director Brunz.
Aye.
Director Milner, aye. Director Beer Meyer.
Aye.
I thought you were going to say nay for a second there. All right, thank you for doing that. And next on our agenda is wit and wisdom modifications.
All right, I have the pleasure of introducing our new teaching and learning director. Andrew Hodges is here, and so he will give you the modification. So welcome, and I'm not sure that all of you have met him, so we're happy to have him with our district.
Welcome.
Thank you. I come from a much smaller district and we didn't have these fancy microphones. So this is, I feel very special up here. I'm I'm pleased to present to you about our wit and wisdom program review. I first want to give my gratitude to Andy Larson, the twenty-one teachers and the three principals who spent time this summer reading the various books, meeting on July eighteenth, engaging in conversations about the books and really going through what recommendations they have. There's recommendations here, we have for any changes or modifications, but there's also discussions they had about what approaches they would have to the texts when they go to teach them. That might be, you know, there's what wit and wisdom has, how they would approach teaching the text. But they started getting into even more discussions about how they would teach it, what ideas they had. So they started to even getting more juices flowing about the excitement about the curriculum and the books and things like that. So it was, it was really great for them to take the time and I really appreciate them doing that over the summer and getting started with that. During this process that they were doing this review, they went through and looked at kind of three big buckets. Does the material present any inaccurate content? Meaning false or misleading information, stereotypes of different racial, cultural or religious groups. Two, is the material appropriate for the age level that you teach? Is it content that could be too scary for students? Does it contain inappropriate language or subject matter that would not be understood? And three, are there any other concerns you have about the literary content? So that helped focus in the discussions that the teachers had when they came together on the eighteenth. Based upon the work that the review team did, they then submitted the recommendations to me. I then went through those recommendations. I, if I had questions about them, I would ask further questions to Andy Larson or anybody else if I had them. And then that came through to these, really out of the three main recommendations that you see here, there are two previous recommendations that are included on this list. And so I'll walk through them kind of in order here. I do want to point out, and I thought I caught this before I sent it, and I did send it to Ms. Ludwig Ludwig when I was sitting here. Woods Runner is actually a fourth grade text. I have it listed here as a fifth grade text, so I did send the update as I was sitting here. But the first one is the book My Five Senses, which is a Kindergarten book. In this book, there's an image of a child in a bathtub with their body exposed. Now, you can't see anything inappropriate, but when the discussion with the teachers, the image itself isn't really an appropriate image. It doesn't lend itself to any kind of academic learning, it doesn't benefit anything. Really, it's something that they saw that would be distracting to the learning that was really meant to be going on. And the recommendation of the teachers was either to cover up the image, either with a different image that they could put on that, it's a book that the teachers, you know, they hold it and they read it like this. Or if they're with a, they're with the students in a small group, that they'd be able to cover that up. And so we would be able to do that and be able to cover that image up and take care of that without, you know, having to incur any additional cost to the district in that manner. The next one, when then we skip through, there were no concerns from first, second or third grade that came through with in terms of either modifying text or changing any texts. The differences came when we got to fourth and fifth grade. Now, previously, there was the recommended change, and that was already made, which is replacing Walk Two Moons with the invention of Hugo Cabaret. And so that's already taken place, we already have those texts. The next one is George versus George, which is a book where the teacher, the students have this book in their hands and a section of the book where the students do not read and is not covered in the curriculum. So it's not actually a curricular change that we're recommending here. It's a portion of the book that if a kid wanted to read ahead, they could access it. It does mention a portion of sexual violence in the text. And so the word that is mentioned is in the text. Skip through to the page, and it talks about the British soldiers going through looting, seizing people's houses and raping and murdering innocent civilians. And so the recommendation was that we would collect the books and that we would censor the word rape in the text, that if students did go ahead, that they would not have access and they wouldn't see that portion of the the text in there. It doesn't, that, taking out that word, you know, it doesn't do anything to understanding the text or changing really anything in there. And it's something we could again do with incurring no cost to the school district or changing any of the curriculum again to the students. It's not something that's in the curriculum, it's not something that they cover at all. The next one is a previously recommended change, Thunder Rolling in the Mountains. Already, we have adopted the Birch Bark House, so that one is already taking place. And the last one is Woods Runner. The first three chapters of this book do contain quite a bit of violent imagery. I was not familiar with this book at first, I thought I was familiar with a lot of Gary Paulson. So I had to go back through and reread this or read this for the first time myself as well. And it does have quite a bit and quite, I started to tab it out and then I kind of stopped tabbing it out because it was quite a bit of violent imagery in there. And so the recommendation was, is there an alternative text that wit and wisdom has that we could look at? And so they do have one, it's Tolliver's Secret. I have not read this text yet. Luckily, this book is not covered until module three, which is towards the end of the school year. It's likely that in our first year of wit and wisdom, there are four modules. We would only get through the first three modules, that's completely normal. The first year or two of going through wit and wisdom, that schools go through the first three modules, not all four. You still cover all of the standards when you do that. And so this would be towards the end of the year, so we would have time to review Tolliver's Secret. The question, though, is, are we able to return the text, Woods Runner, to to wit and wisdom? Are we then able to purchase Tolliver's Secret and what is the cost that we would incur? So that is the question that is out there. Is there going to be a cost that we incur with that change? But it was pretty, pretty much everybody in that group did agree that the first three chapters, it was quite violent and the teachers felt that it would not be, they did not feel as comfortable teaching that text. In addition to these changes, you know, as educators, we do know that any text that we teach, there's going to be pre-teaching we have to do, there's going to be, you know, stuff that we send home to families to let them know we're covering this book. There's going to be topics that might come up, things you might be hearing that about what we're reading. And so we know that there's going to be those that we need to be doing as well. In talking to our contact at wit and wisdom, they do have those family newsletters that we can send out that cover what we, what's going to be coming up in the modules and that, of course, we can add to those if we would like to as well, if we see things from our review that we would like to add into those family newsletters about what's going on and that what's going to be covered in these modules. We know that in historical fiction and nonfiction, that there are terms that are not appropriate anymore that we need to review with students. I'll give you an example in a text that students read. There is a word that is used that is no longer acceptable, that is used in the book once, and the word is midget. And we would not use that any longer, but the word is used and it's kind of just glossed over in the text. And it's not covered in the curriculum to go over what that word. But the teachers brought up that they know that we should point out that that word is inappropriate. We don't use that, you should not use that, and that they would have a mini lesson where they review that word and why it's not appropriate any longer. And so, words like that are going to come up. Those are teaching moments that we have with students, and those are times when we really should embrace those teaching moments that we have with students, because they're opportunities where we can really, they might hear that language somewhere else. And so, it's opportunities where we can have in the classroom, where we can talk about that. And so, I welcome questions about these recommended changes or any other questions you might have about other texts that we might have in Witten Wisdom or any other questions about the curriculum.
And if I can just add what Andrew just mentioned as far as the earlier decisions with Walk Two Moons and Thunder Rolling in the Mountains, those were in collaboration with the Minnesota Department of Indigenous Education.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments, board members? Yes.
For, outside of those two that you've highlighted, what was the, the driving force for the other three issues that were identified? And for censorship or changes?
Do you mean like the My Five Senses, George versus George and Woods Runner?
Yeah, and what was the impetus? How did that become known and then to drive work in that area?
So, the, the teachers coming together to have the discussion. So, when they were reading the books, they each individually would identify, you know, is the materially, or material appropriate? So, in My Five Senses, when they're reading through the book, and I can, I thought I had the page marked on here. When they're reading through the book, and they come to the, they would come to the page, and it says water, you know, they see the image, and they said, I don't know that that image is appropriate for the classroom. And so, then they brought it to the discussion, and they said, you know, I look at the question, it says, you know, is the material appropriate? And they said, I don't know that this is an appropriate image that I would bring into the classroom. Would I bring this image to the classroom if it wasn't in the text? I would not bring that image to the classroom if it wasn't in the text on my own. And so, that kind of brings that kind of discussion to up. George versus George, similarly. The book itself, other than that, you know, they got to that point because they reviewed the entire text. Had we asked them just review the curricular text, they would not have even gotten to that point of the text, but we asked them to review the entire text, which I think is, is the right thing to do, because students are, I would have if I was in fourth grade. I would, I loved the Revolutionary War at that age. I would have read the whole thing. And so, I think it's, it's good to do that and really get that whole context. Same thing with Woods Runner. That actually is part of the curriculum, reading those first three chapters. One of the options that a teacher said was, you know, we could just do a read aloud before we hand out Woods Runner and read the first three chapters to students, just the teacher reading it and giving that context and having discussions with students about that imagery and about like, what does it mean and all of that, and having those discussions. But that also adds a decent amount of time to then have that, have those discussions when, if we're wanting to cover, you know, the learning content and standards. That adds a lot of time that you're then doing to cover a text versus covering the learning standards.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. I'd also like to thank you and the staff who took the time to go through this and really come through it and everything. As we had discussed when we, when we initially approved the curriculum with modifications, the goal is, right, this is literacy curriculum. The goal is to make sure that no parent would feel the need to opt their child out of learning how to read, right? So, we want to make sure that we don't have anything that, that would potentially cause that. And I appreciate the, the updates that I've made. I do have a question about one book. Is the book Separate is Never Equal going to be part of the curriculum? Is that the plan?
Yes, so Separate but Never Equal would be in second grade, Module Three, I believe.
Okay, so, and, and that's what I found online, too, was second grade. So, with one of the questions being, is this, sorry, I'm gonna flip back here. Is the content, is the content, or does the content stereotype different racial, racial, cultural, or religious groups? There's a couple, there's two pages that I'm concerned about in here. And it is, it's, so the, the book is about racial segregation in California and kind of how that flows, and it's, it's a courtroom scene, kind of a thing. And so, the, I believe it's the principal is being asked, for what other reasons do you send children to the Mexican school? Asked Mr. Marcus. Sylvia and her family braced themselves to hear what Mr. Kent would say next. For their social behavior, they need to learn cleanliness of mind, manner, and dress. They are not learning that at home. They have problems with lice, emphytocho, and tuberculosis. They have generally dirty hands, face, neck, and ears. And then it goes on a bit, and I, I've listened to this book twice. I listened to it last night. And my concern is that this doesn't seem, in my mind anyway, this isn't really resolved as being, hey, no, that was completely wrong. He doesn't admit that this was wrong. And so, I'm concerned about the stereotyping for those specific pages.
Yeah, and I know when, when I looked at this book and these pages, pages 26 and 27, and looked at it under that question 1B, in particular, the lens I looked at it through was, is, is it presenting a stere, is the book presenting the stereotype? Or is the book dismantling the stereotype? And the book's intent is to dismantle the stereotype, not present the stereotype, which is why we didn't see that it fit 1B, in our opinion, which is why we didn't put it under recommendation for a modification.
Thank you. Are there other questions, concerns, comments? All right. With that, I'm looking for, I guess, okay. So, my other opinion on this book, I don't feel like the book is age-appropriate with the courtroom drama and, and all of that. That's my opinion. So. All right, looking for a motion on this item to approve the Witten Wisdom modifications.
Zuzik would make the motion to accept the Witten Wisdom curriculum modifications. And with that, I would just comment that I'm grateful for the effort of the staff that did the work.
Okay, we, well, let's take a second, looking for a second.
Brunz will second.
All right, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then, that's okay. Any discussion, Director Biermeyer?
Yeah, I would just like to thank everybody for the hard work that's been done, too, and the transparency of it. I think that's important. And job well done by everybody. Thank you.
With that, we'll take a roll call vote.
Director Pine.
Aye.
Director Brunz.
Aye.
Chair Tate.
Aye.
Director Milner, aye. Director Biermeyer.
Aye.
Vice Chair Dresley.
Aye.
Director Zuzik.
Aye.
All right, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Hodges, for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I have way too many tabs open. Okay, next up are two international trips. One of them is actually a Greece pre-trip. The Greece trip itself was approved by the board last summer. And the second one is a new trip. Superintendent Champa, did you want to make comments about this?
Yes, so for both of these, we did just update this form. And so, the updated form was just added earlier today. So, I want to give some context to this, and then if you want to wait on this, this first trip isn't until October. And so, one of the things that we have found that with some of the organizations that our groups work with, there may be some other opportunities. So, one of the things that we added to the form is, is there a pre-trip opportunity? What does that look like, all of that? So, the first one that you have is a pre-trip form or pre-trip approval. So, last year, we had a couple of people go on a pre-trip for this Greece trip. And so, what they do is they look at the venues, they look at the safety, they look at all of that ahead of time. And there's no expense to the district, and, and we can talk about that in lots of different ways, I'm sure. But that's how that's presented, and they're afforded the ability to go on that. So, we just wanted to make sure in full transparency that the board is aware of that and approves that. Now, last year, when the trip went in the fall, Ms. Chandler was not able to go at that time. So, they are offering her the pre-trip this fall instead. And so, again, she didn't go last fall because of a number of reasons, and now has the ability to go this year. So, what you would be approving is the pre-trip for Ms. Chandler for the Greece trip that has already been approved as a student trip. The second one is, and again, I'm consider, that you might want to consider pausing on both of these because the form was just updated this afternoon. The correct form was not on here. The second one is the France trip, and this is through Mr. Laterno. And in this case, there is not a pre-trip, so this one is just for the approval of the trip itself.
All right, so, I'm gonna start. I honestly, the updates of the forms brought more questions to my head than, than answers. And I would appreciate having some additional time. I think this was like 3 o'clock this afternoon, 4 o'clock this afternoon that this got updated. I, I would appreciate some additional time to think through this and ask questions. One of the things I'm wondering is, why do we, why do we feel the need to have pre-trips on some and not other trips? I'd also like to understand how, how these pre-trips are paid for ultimately. And understand, you know, just, just, I, I have more questions. I'll just say that. So, I would like to actually move that we postpone the vote on this until a future meeting, and maybe that is something that we tack on to our work session. We're gonna, I believe we're gonna have some contracts we have to approve anyway in that special section, session next week, or possibly at the end of the month. Anyway, I would like to move that we postpone the vote until a few, another meeting in August.
I second that motion.
Any discussion?
I will just say that I, it brought a lot of questions, knowing that teachers go on a pre-trip before the students go on the trip. And if, it just raised a lot of questions for me, is it, who puts the bill for that? Because somebody's putting the bill for that. It might not be the district, but is it the parents? So, those are the kinds of things that I'd like to see come forward in the information that we receive.
Go ahead.
Having just attended the Washington DC trip with eighth graders, I mean, they have chaperones, and, I mean, everything's in place. So, my question on a trip like this is, do they not have those people? Is that why they're going over to determine safety and all of those things? Is it a completely different style of trip?
There are others better suited to answer your questions, so we'll make sure we have them.
So, yeah, so the, the objective is, is, you know, with this new information, formulate your questions, send them to Superintendent Champa so she can get the feedback, and we can have a full discussion at a future meeting. So, all right, any other discussion? All right, with that, looking for a roll call vote on the motion to postpone the vote on the Greece and France trips until a, a meeting in August. So, roll call vote.
Director Biermeyer.
Aye.
Director Milner, aye. Chair Tate.
Aye.
Director Brunz.
Aye.
Director Zuzik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Dresley.
Aye.
Director Pine.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next, we are looking at our future meetings. And we have this great new format that was developed, very colorful. So, our next meeting is our work session, which is next Wednesday night at 6:00 PM, right here. The day after, we have our policy meeting, and then we have our Student School Board meeting, committee meeting on the 8th. And then on the 9th, we have the Facilities Committee meeting. Go ahead.
The Student School Board Committee meeting may be moved to the day prior. Isn't confirmed, but I just wanted to put that out there, so I was being transparent about it.
Thank you for that. And then at this time, we have our building tour of Tilden planned for 5:00 PM on the 28th. And we have, our regular board meeting is scheduled for 6:00 PM on the 28th. However, our Hastings High School Open House is scheduled for the night of the 28th, and we have two board members here with brand-new freshmen. And I would certainly appreciate if we could accommodate so that I could be there and go to the open house for my, my daughter. This is my first high schooler, so all-new experience here. So, anyway, I'm wondering, one option would be that we push our start time, that, like I said, the open house is from 5:00 to 7:00. I'm wondering if we could, would consider pushing our start time of the regular board meeting to 7:00 PM instead of 6:00 PM? Is that, is everybody, can they accommodate that? All right, thank you very much, everybody, yes. All right, and then I don't know what you want to do with the building tour. I would skip that because I'll be at the open house, if we want to keep that at 5:00 o'clock or if we want to look at moving that to a different time as well.
Yeah, what would you like to do with that? Because I know Director Gore will be staying specifically for that. So, I just don't want her to stay, and then we have a slim crowd.
I will not be attending that one.
I have a, I have a high school or two.
I'll be there.
And we have an open, IS2194 has an open house that night, so I wouldn't be in attendance at that tour.
I have a work function that's going till 5:00 PM. I won't be there.
Would you prefer changing that?
Maybe we could move it to 6:00, because that would still give us an hour ahead of time.
That just keeps her an extra hour then to, let's look at September, if you're okay with that.
Sounds good.
Good.
Okay, thank you, and I appreciate the modification there. Then, looking ahead to our agendas here. So, next week, so this is one thing, board members be ready to discuss possible resolutions to send to MSBA. The deadline for submitting those is in September. MSBA is the Minnesota School Board Association, and they are asking for districts to submit resolutions to them. They no longer accept resolutions written by individual board members. It is, it has to come to them from the, from the board instead, so this is a change in their process. Then, we will also be discussing Superintendent Champa's goals for the next school year. We will be having a conversation on a new cell phone policy. So, for folks who are not aware, the state legislature this year has dictated that we have to have a standalone cell phone policy, and it has to be in place by March 15th. So, we currently have a cell phone policy, and unfortunately, this is going to mean our policy may change mid-school year, but it is what it is. So, we'll have our first discussion as a board about that. And then that, the intent of that is to set the direction for the Policy Committee to create that policy. We'll also be discussing the hockey arena roof, and the city administrator is going to be attending. We will also be discussing the handbooks for, student handbooks, staff handbooks. And then we will be previewing a proposed Discipline and Student Behavior Report Card, new format by the principals. So, that's our work session next week. Okay. All right. So, then, and I mentioned a little bit earlier, we will probably have some contracts that need to be approved next week as well, so we'll probably tack on a special session to get those approved. And then, the only couple of things that I have at the August regular session so far is to approve the superintendent goals and then the, a decision on the hockey arena roof. So, those are our topics coming for the next month. All right, any questions? All right, so I, yes.
Are you saying that we're gonna have a special session before the working session next week?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
At work?
Okay. We'll just address.
Okay. All right, and then if I, if there's nothing else regarding scheduling, we're good to go? All right, then I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Milner moves to adjourn.
Second, Dresley.
All right, any discussion? All right, with that, please take a roll call vote one last time.
Director Pine.
Aye.
Director Zuzik.
Aye.
Director Biermeyer.
Aye.
Vice Chair Dresley.
Aye.
Chair Tate. Chair Tate?
Aye.
Director Burns?
Aye.
Director Milner?
Aye.
All right, thank you, have a good evening.